The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octobah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
At the bottom of page five, item one, then at the next page, top of next page, two, three, and five. Police Department, item one. Public Services, item one. Some of the items haven't been left off at the request of one or more of the Alderman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Burton?
I have no objection to educational leave. I like that you made sure you can complete some specific policies of educational leave.
We're talking the Fire Department. Are you talking about any of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Might Mr. Boyd want to answer that now? Alderman Perkins wanted to know if you had given some review to all of the requests for educational leave. I note that the Fire Department requests for out-of-town traveler styled educational leave. Some of the others are not, but also we have educational leave or approval for taking the courses for Mr. Kim. Let's see, Mr. Perkins was there.
I just want to make sure he's reviewed the reports and they comply with the city policies from last year.
Okay. But Mr. Perkins's question is, have you reviewed these? Do they comply with current city policy relative to leave or educational?
I feel that they do.
Okay. So those items will remain on consent. And unless anybody else has any item to delete from the recommended list, consent on any item to add, I would move approval of the agenda as amended, the amendments being the designation of certain items to the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda, the consent items, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. It brings us to the approval of the board, Alderman Minutes. The first one will be December Minutes of the December sixteenth, two thousand eight.
May I move approval of the general corrections I sent to town earlier?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Minutes approval of December third first, two thousand eight.
Move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay. Brings us down to announcements. I'd like to congratulate Ty Timms. I don't know if any of you tried his restaurant or not, but he was featured in Southern Living magazine for chefs of the south with my crowd out here and representing our community. Jeremy Taylor should be added to that as well, in which he got the Builder of the Year award, I think, for his project on South Ungar Street, which is a very lovely and very nice project that he has done down there in Starkville, just getting a lot of very popular things happening this time. Brings us to the citizens' comment. Let's see, Alderman had anything they'd like to say. This is a time in our agenda in which citizens can take three minutes, no more than three minutes, to express any concern they may have. Yes, sir. If you'd come up, tell us your name, where you're from, and what ward.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman in Starkville, I'm Ralph Litterst of one zero eight Pinewood Drive. And I have a suggestion for being incorporated in your long-term planning. I think very few of us are really conscious of the corridor that we have crossing Starkville from one end to the other. We pass it continually, but we don't recognize it. And that is this railroad right-of-way. I see very little use of it, and actually, no use that I see. But this could eventually be an excellent place for biking and hiking trails. It would extend from out near Walmart to Research Park. I think it would be very popular and be a central park comparable to the central park that New York City has. I don't know that what the technical problem might be, but possibly we could eventually get it on a long-term lease. It's not really wide enough for any vehicular traffic, but this town really needs a good place for people to hike and bike as far as they want to. And that's a place where they could incorporate daily chores and activities. It would go right through the center of town. You're all well acquainted with it. And I would just recommend that this be taken into account and developed in the nearest timeframe that we can put to see.
Thank you, sir. We have Starkville in motion, thought about this several years ago, and they have a program in which I'm sure that they've got a committee in which they're investigating bikes and rails, I believe, and which that's already been discussed, but nothing has come forth at this point. Thank you, sir.
Well, I'd just like to see it promoted as much as possible.
That'd be a good organization for you to be a part of.
Well, would be. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm unclear what area he's talking about.
He's talking about the railroad, which is not used. And Starkville in motion has a bikes and trail program in which they work out with little used railroads to make them into the type of thing that he's talking about.
And hiking also. A lot of people like to hike. I hike several times a week.
Thank you, sir, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, how are you tonight?
Good evening to the mayor and board. Citizens, we'd like to wish you all early Valentine. Hope that everything is nice. Citizens, we will miss Mr. McLauren and Mr. Davis. We hope that we don't get into too many dogfights. That will be too short. I will leave these papers here in the middle of the election. A lot of people, they are not computer savvy, but if they can read, that helps a lot, so that they would not get the wrong understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to take three minutes to address the city that come forward?
Good evening, to the board, to the mayor, and also to my Alderman, Mr. Roy Perkins, Chief of Staff Roy Perkins here. I would just like to say in the ministry where y'all are going to have a report from the election committee on the status of the convention process and approval of the poll in place. I would just like to say if you have decided that you're going to have everybody going to the same poll, think about all the lunch lines that we would have, people going to vote different places, and they wouldn't have time, you know, to stand in those long lines. This would interfere with the citizens' right to vote, because you have a certain time that you have to get in and vote, and it would probably take away from the process. I'm asking you, if there's anything coming before the board tonight on that, you will review that very carefully. Please review it very carefully. Decide what the citizens need here in Starkville. Not only, you know, what we need, but what the citizens need in time of giving to vote. Don't take away the privilege of that. And I'd also like to say, in the way of this month being Black History Month, I would just like to give privilege and honor to Sister Janet Self here, Alderman woman, and also to Mr. Roy Perkins for serving the city well. Thank y'all for a job filled down on Black History Month. Thank y'all very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to take three minutes? If not, we'll move on. We have several public appearances tonight. The first is a presentation of an annual report on the court. Judge?
Electronic devices. Mr. Mayor and Board of Alderman, thank you for the time that you've allotted to us tonight. The purpose of our appearance is to give you an annual report on the municipal court for the city of Starkville, Mississippi. Mr. Rook, as you know, is our court administrator and is joining with me tonight. You should have in your packet of information a sheet with the summarized statistics of the court. Does anyone not have two sheets in your packet? These figures go back several years and show us where we have been, where we are now, and probably what direction we'll be going in in the future. The total traffic citations for two thousand and eight were ten thousand and sixty-one, down about twelve hundred and sixty-seven from two thousand and seven. The DUIs were slightly down, four oh one for two thousand and eight as opposed to four twenty-four for two thousand and seven, minus twenty-three. Misdemeanors were down six hundred and fifty-six from seventeen fifty-seven to eleven hundred and one. Felonies were slightly up, plus two, two hundred and fifty for two thousand and eight. The total new cases in two thousand and eight were eleven thousand four hundred and twelve, down from thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three in two thousand and seven, a decrease of about nineteen hundred total cases. Page two, you will see the court collections for two thousand and eight, down slightly from two thousand and seven at approximately five point eight percent. Despite our lack of working space that you are well aware of, the municipal court is functioning well. The court administrator and clerks are diligent in their duties and serving the city of Starkville and its citizenry. The municipal prosecutor, Mr. Roy Carpenter, is representing the city well in municipal court. The court continues to enjoy a good working relationship with the various law enforcement agencies. Our thanks go to Chief David Lindley. Is Chief Lindley here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Chief Lindley, and Assistant Chief John Outlaw, as well as Sheriff Dolph Ryan, for their excellent cooperation with the court. I want to thank you for your support of the municipal court. And I would now ask you, are there any questions about the statistics of the court as presented Very well, thank you. The second portion of our report deals with a personnel matter. Having been appointed as the city of Starkville Municipal Judge on March the first, nineteen seventy-six, and having served continuously since then, the decision has been made to retire from the bench as the Starkville Municipal Judge, effective June the thirtieth of this year. The decision having been made to retire from the bench, if you would allow me, please, to make some recommendations to you regarding my successor. It is believed that it would be desirable to appoint a successor immediately, but that the appointee formally take office on July one of two thousand and nine to commence statutory duties as the municipal judge. The desirability of appointing an immediate successor is based on several factors that I'd like to go over with you. First of all, whoever is appointed needs a thorough understanding of all aspects of the municipal court and the responsibilities of the municipal judge. This person needs to be adequately prepared to take the bench on July the first of this year. Having been the only municipal judge for the city of Starkville for the last thirty-three years, I am the only person who knows the complete details and workings of our court, and this knowledge needs to be shared with whomever you select as my successor. I believe this would be necessary to accomplish a smooth transition from me to whoever you select. I need, I think, to spend some time with my successor to educate that person about what to expect as the new municipal judge for the city of Starkville. I believe this person could benefit from my experience on the bench and thereby be a better judge and better serve the people of this community and its citizenry. This person, I think, should have sufficient time to observe and study the procedures of our court, not only in court sessions, but also observe and work with me and the court administrator, Mr. Rook, in learning out-of-court procedures and practices as well. Some of these include arrest warrant procedures, search warrant procedures, preparation and responsibility of court documents, supervision of court personnel, fine collections, and other administrative procedures. Appointing a new judge now to formally take office on July the first would also be advantageous, I think, to the new appointee, because this several-month period would allow the appointee to conduct an unhurried study of the court and thereby make this person better educated to take the bench. In June of each year, the annual municipal judges conference is held. This is a valuable learning experience, particularly for new judges. It is suggested that the new appointee attend this conference to study updates on Mississippi law and learn from other municipal judges as well as myself. Also, because of the four court sessions of the court each week and the time and workload involved, I think it would be fair to the appointee, if the appointee were given sufficient time to transition from one's law practice or from one's job to the judgeship itself because of the time requirement involved. I believe the new judge could serve the city better by learning the details of the position over a period of a few months. Certainly, I am willing, Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to spend time with this person, both in court and out-of-court time, to give the appointee the benefit of my experience. I want to thank you, and I want to thank all the other boards that were before you, as well as the mayors, for giving me the opportunity to serve as your municipal judge since March the first, nineteen seventy-six. I will formally file my application to retire on June the thirtieth, two thousand and nine, as municipal judge with the city clerk this week. I now ask you, are there any questions or comments that I might entertain with this one?
Judge, obviously, you've given this transition a great deal of thought with the recommendations you brought here. Is there somebody in mind that you think would fit these characteristics of municipal judge? You have a recommendation for us?
Yes, I do. Mr. Davis, I have a recommendation for you. My recommendation is sitting right in the middle of the board, right next to the mayor. I would recommend Mr. Rodney Faber for your consideration as your new municipal judge. I have known him for about twelve years, eleven or twelve years, I think, Rodney. He has been a previous prosecutor in this court. He served here for, I think, about eighteen months when Mr. Carpenter was on military duty in Iraq. He did an outstanding job as prosecutor then, and he's had previous experience as prosecutor, I believe, down in Florida as well. I've come to know Mr. Faber as the board attorney and as a member of the bar here, the Octibah County Bar and the State Bar. Mr. Faber has an outstanding reputation as a person of integrity and honor, honesty. He's very competent. I believe that he has the temperament to be an outstanding judge for the city of Starkville. And I believe he's fully qualified to serve in that capacity. And I strongly would recommend him for your consideration.
And Judge, if I may add, Mr. Faber also served as prosecutor in Justice Court when Mr. Carpenter was his son.
Yes, sir. Certainly did.
I believe you've been the judge for thirty-three years, and we certainly appreciate many years of service there, I think, Mr. McLauren.
Oh. Judge, thank you for all of those comments. Mr. Mayor, I have two motions to offer in light of what the judge has said. The first motion is that the city accept with regret and with all our thanks to you for the thirty-three years you have served as the city's municipal judge, the only municipal judge once we left the process of mayor's acting as municipal judges, so that we accept with regret, but with our gratitude, and further that the, Mr. Mayor, that the city plan appropriate recognition of Judge Ishii's service at a time closer to his retirement. And that's the first motion I would make, and I salute.
Got a motion second? Those in favor, say aye. Next motion.
Oh, Ms. Mayor, second, in light of Judge Ishii's comments, I would move the appointment of Mr. Rodney Faber as municipal judge effective July one, two thousand and nine, and that Mr. Faber be approved for attendance expenses related thereto at the June Municipal Judges' Conference, so that he can effect with Judge Ishii a seamless transition in our municipal court. The municipal court has functioned, of course, with the backup of these law enforcement agencies that you mentioned, particularly our Starkville Police Department, in an exemplary way over all these years. So I would move Mr. Faber's appointment effective July one, two thousand and nine, as municipal judge, and preapproval of attendance at the judges' conference in June.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Congratulations, Rodney.
Let me just say, Judge, I appreciate what you said. It means a great deal to me. And I appreciate the confidence that all of you have shown in me by forming this position. You know, serving as a judge in my own town is a dream come true for me, so, thank you.
Okay. Mr. McLauren, I want to thank you for your kind comments in your first motion, sir.
Oh, allow it down, Jim.
And certainly, I believe I'm correct that you and I have served in different capacities in the city longer than anyone else here tonight. Would that be a correct statement?
That would be a fair assessment, yes.
Fair assessment. Well, I do want to thank you for your comments, and I want to thank you for your motion, and I want to thank the board for passing his first motion regarding me personally, and I want to thank you also for following my recommendation. I am confident that Mr. Faber will be an outstanding judge for you. And it's been a great privilege for me to serve the city all of these years, and I want to thank you very much. And so this will be my last formal meeting with you in this capacity, so I would bid you farewell.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Thank you, Alderman.
Appreciate the service.
Our next presentation is by Chairman Dan Moreland and Park Director Clark Roman. There he is. I couldn't find him.
As y'all know, we have been working on the gym down at the park for five years. That has almost become a reality. We hope to complete. We are a little bit behind schedule. We were supposed to have been due on December thirty-first. Didn't quite make it. We moved S A Y basketball back to where we had it for the last ever since it's been in existence, so there wasn't any pushing on it. Hopefully, we'll be through by February the twenty-eighth. On the twelfth of February, twelfth of February, we opened bids for the parking lot. At one time, we didn't think we'd have enough money to do the parking lot. We're gonna have to gravel it, but Matthew Ryan has done a good job in helping oversee our money, and we have cut corners and all to where we're gonna have enough money to do the parking lot. Also, we visited the county, the board of supervisors, back in November, December. We've got some land, this landlot has soccer fields on the right that we can't use unless you walk. So we've got the county to agree to go down there and build a bridge at county expense across that so we can have parking. We'll have fifty, sixty-car parking down on the far end of the soccer field, which we didn't ask the county for money, because they're gonna do like y'all say, and all of our money's obligated, but they did agree to give us, do the park, I mean, do the bridge, and that's quite a good contribution to the park. We've got two hundred and twelve acres of park that, you know, most people look at just Sports Flex or J L King or whatever, but we've got parks scattered everywhere. And I think they've done a good job keeping them up, maintaining them. We've got another project kind of spearheaded by Pete Melvin, and this is something new. It's almost as new as Matt's. And this is something new. It's almost as new as Matt's dog park whenever he wanted to have a dog park. Because we had an out on the dog park. If it didn't work, we're going to blame it on Matt, and if it worked, we're going to take credit for it. We're going to take credit for it. Because this thing has been a tremendous success. Anytime you go over there to the dogs, we haven't had any killings over the dogs. No dog killed each other or whatever. It's been, it's been great. And Matt, I don't know who told you about this, but I know you didn't dig it up on your own. But Pete Melvin has come up with a garden, family garden plot deal. And that's going to be spearheaded by some of the horticulturists, people out at university. It's a small garden plot where they, they are caught on in some places. I think Richmond. Maybe Richmond has one down there, and they say it works real good. You pay a certain amount of fee for a certain amount of little acreage right there. I don't think the plot would be built enough to open a farmer's market. But I think it will, we're just going to try it to see if it works. There again, we'll blame Pete, he's done it, we'll take credit to it. We also, soccer has agreed to build a pavilion down on the sportsplex. We need it for little kids to play, get out of the weather, because soccer plays year-round. They're going to do that at their own expense, and anytime we can take any free things, we'll do it. Also, we've got a S O R grant to build a toddler's playplex down there somewhere. We haven't located it yet, but it's somewhere down in the, either a wheat field or down at the park. We want to keep it where the traffic gets away from the little kids and all this stuff. But hadn't come up with the exact time, I mean, when we will have it. A lot of people think that the park is only for kids, small kids and this type of thing, but it's not. Y'all, I think all y'all have one of these in your package right here that you can go over. But I'm just going to read just a few for the people that don't know. Line dancing, we have 20 people. Square dancing, 20. Senior citizens crowd, 25. Quilting guides, 25. And that's just something that if we don't keep it going, when all the older people die, it's going to be gone. Nobody knows how to build quilting boards, you know? But we have a lot of people down there that are in doing it, and it works out. And it's a totally different group of people than come down and play, you know, soccer or softball or whatever there. Swing dancing, painting, pictures. We had 300 pictures down there for Santa Claus. A Halloween egg hunt. And that must be something Dottie did at the Halloween for the egg hunt. And kids' crafts. So we've got a number of kids that's, and people that participate in this type of stuff that doesn't participate in just the parks and the softball. Back to the gym now, we've got a walking track. We've got two handball courts. We'll be able to have volleyball, badminton, racquetball. Two full courts or four youth courts that the game can go at the same time. We've got one big scoreboard, or two big scoreboards, then we've got four small ones for different individual games. Our money is, we hope to be able to staff that gym by cutting corners without any more, adding any more people. That was one thing that would hold up for a long time. We thought it might be costing too much to operate. It will cost some, but we hope to keep it within the range of where we are now. Because we may come next year and say we've got to have some more money, and I know y'all will say, yes. We had an assault down there in the broad open daylight. It was six people caught, and David and them, they ended up catching the people, six of them. They've all been notified, and we served notice on the bar and completed from any parts we've got anywhere. And Chief Lindon and them delivered the letters to them, saying that they could not be on the park for any reason, anywhere. So the paper kind of made it sound like it wasn't safe at the park. I don't think they intended it that, but that's kind of the way it come out. But then they said on down into the thing, if you read the whole part, that after the, how many years?
12.
12 years. That was the only instance that happened down there. You know, that's not bad. My wife's been mad at me more than one time in 12 years. But, you know, I think it's safe. We do have policemen that work down there. It's not for the people on the field, as in any case, it's not for that. It's for the people lauding in the parking lots and this type of thing before the problems come. It does not come from the, from the people that's playing and come down there to enjoy the parks.
Clark, you got anything to add?
No, I think we've pretty much covered it all.
Have y'all got any questions? Any questions for board members?
Dan, have y'all thought any about putting gate across the two parks so it's like we're on time or something?
We are looking into, we are looking into that now, how we can make it and get somebody out that's, that'd come in there. We would like to do something on it.
There's a lot of traffic after 10.
We go to a lot of softball tournaments and games and stuff around, both college and at, playing at College and Park. And they, a lot of them, probably half of them, have a, at 10 o'clock, the gate's locked. You can't come in, you can't go out at 10 o'clock. So we're looking in on how to handle that, and I think that will be a good thing once we get that done.
I would, would note that coming up for our first big soccer tournament in April, we've got 88 teams lined up to come to that North Half State Tournament. Fortunately or unfortunately, how you look at it, it's on Super Bowl weekend. But it's going to be huge, and it's, not that we need it at that particular weekend, but that's when it is.
It's fell on that weekend every time, and two or three times, we tried to work around it. But we told the people that motel rooms are limited, even though we've got probably, what, twice as many as we used to have? And they all said, we'll find a room. So that's the biggest thing we've ever had in Starkville was a statewide little boys' soccer team meeting. They played, stayed in Tuscaloosa, they stayed in Carthage, make, anywhere they could find a motel room. Adults doesn't draw many people because they come by themselves. Kids bring, in so many cases, four sets of parents, I mean, two sets of parents, four sets of grandparents, all this come. So anytime you have a youth thing, especially the smaller kids, you're going to have a big turnout for motels and restaurants and all, and that's what funds this thing. Any questions?
Clark, you, baseball registration will be this month?
Yes, sir. It'll be at McAllister's. The two on sites will be at McAllister's. And then you'll be able to register at our, our office, 8:5, any day up until the drop dead date, which they haven't announced yet. Yeah, there are two advertised sites, and flyers have been sent to all the schools, and it'll be in the paper. It's coming up soon.
And then the girls' softball, we have been, it's steadily decreasing everywhere in the 18 and under. We used to, you know, hit 5, 6, 17, 18 and under, 16 through 18, and 14 through 16, and 12 through. Now then, we turned it all into 12 and up, and we ended up with one team last year. So what we did is Matthew come up with the idea of notifying students. So we called all the public and private schools around. The first year, we had 10 teams to play all summer. We guarantee them two games a night when they come up. And right now, we have people from Meridian and all around coming, to come this year. So what we're looking for, 20, 25 teams this year. And every one of those teams that come up here and play, they're going to go to Opitz, they're going to go to McDonald's, they're going to go somewhere and eat, and that's putting money in our pocket, and that's what we ask. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next presentation tonight is more of an international presentation in which we have the World Neighbors Association to the city and to highlight the International Festival. We have Shaw's and we have Joan Milroy here tonight. Ladies, I'll turn it over to.
Good evening. My name is Shaw Zachary. I'm the Assistant Director at Holmes Cultural University Center, Mississippi State. But we, there are a group of phenomenal women who've volunteered their time for Well Neighbors, which is a nonprofit organization that connects the community and the international students and community to put up various programs. Joan Milroy will conduct a presentation. I'd like you to direct your attention to this slideshow. And we have a website, and Well Neighbors Association, we have some basic goals, and that is provide opportunities for cross-cultural programs and social interaction between the residents of Starkville and students and faculty at NC State University. There are a lot of international students on campus, we have a lot of international faculty, and they're very willing to share some of their cultural information with the rest of Starkville. We are nonprofit, volunteer, we depend solely on the financial support of individuals and groups to carry on its diversified international activities and intercultural programs. What are some of the programs that we do? One of the big ones is the International Fiesta. It's not the only one, but that is the biggest one. And the International Fiesta was started in 1991. The first event was on Main Street in Starkville, right where the Cadence Bank is now. And it was begun by Armando and Ruth Del Cruz. And for a while, it was on Main Street, and then it went to the old Walmart, maybe the oldest Walmart location. It keeps moving around, doesn't it? And it was there for a couple of years, and then it went on campus, just because logistics were easier. It was bigger space without traffic to contend with. It was a safer environment. It starts out with a parade of flags and national costumes, and I'm wearing my national costume from Norway today, just as a little added touch here. And it's just wonderful. We have the ROTC involved, and as many students as we can on campus get involved in this to learn about international people and customs and culture. So here we are in our parade. Little girls come dressed in costumes. So it's a wonderful event that takes place, no matter where you're from, you know, they, they all participate. There's a cultural program that takes place this year. It's going to be on March 28th. And the cultural program, you'll notice there's a very beautiful woman there on the right, right? Matt Cox, yeah. Anyway. So what we have is during the whole time period, it'll be from 11 until 3 this year. It will be entertained by a variety of groups with people and being announcers. And here we have some of the little girls dancing and bigger girls dancing. And it's, it's just a wonderful event to, you know, showcase the international culture we have. And a lot of people don't even know it until they show up, and they go, wow, all these people are from Starkville? Well, most of them are, but then we have surrounding towns that also participate. We have Columbus and Jackson and other places. We have music by a variety of groups. There's a Native American group that's, well, a group that performs Native American dances, even though most of them are not. So just a few pictures from that event. South American dancers. And then all day long, there will be cultural displays, and every year, we've had this cultural display showing five countries saying, okay, this is what we have in our country, and here's an activity you can do, and here you can learn about us. And they tell about themselves, and show about themselves, and talk to people, and ask questions, and it's just one way of exchanging ideas. There's also food that is, that is offered. Most, a lot of groups, they get food, pass a food course where they have to make sure they do everything right so nobody gets sick from the food. So they're qualified, you know, cookers, and so they do all sorts of things. So, and there's people that sell goods from different parts of the world, which is also very interesting. And again, people from Starkville and all around Mississippi attending events, not just Starkville. People from all over the state come in to see this and enjoy this event and to participate in. We have MSU clubs and classes that participate, and just here, there, everywhere, people enjoying the day. One of the other events that takes place at the Fiesta is children's games, and these are international games. There's always a pinata and other games that they never would have imagined that they, that other children do around the world that they can enjoy. The group sponsors a Girl Scout group, and this is the only international Girl Scout group that we know of in Mississippi. There's a Thanksgiving dinner that takes place every, every year, and this is, they serve traditional food. It's for international students and their families. Volunteers help prepare and serve the food. There are door prizes, and Armando and Ruth Del Cruz started this in their home many, many years ago. Well, we, you can't have it in your home anymore, so we moved to the Methodist church. So it's co-sponsored by the First Methodist Church here in Starkville. There's performances that take place. There are speakers, there are side shows, there are skips. Also, Well Neighbors help to support the Fulbright Scholars by having a welcoming dinner when they arrive in town. This is co-sponsored with the MSU graduate program. There's a Valentine's party, whether it's dancing or whatever else you want to go on, it's kind of fun. There's a Christmas party, you know, what is Christmas like in the United States? And usually, someone offers their home and invites international students, and we help prepare the food. So there's one of the events there. We participate in the Cotton District Arts Festival. So not only do we sponsor our own events, but also we participate in other, we have other county events and university events. So the Arts Festival is one we enjoy, and again, we have, have flags there and entertainment so people can enjoy arts from other parts of the world. We participate in the Christmas Parade this year. So here we're with our flags and our little cup. And again, we have a website we can go to, and we don't do anything by ourselves. We usually do things in conjunction with other groups and get support. The Holmes Cultural Diversity Center, the Division of Student Affairs at NC State University, and of course, a lot of businesses in town come also to support us and help us out. So it's getting the university involved in understanding the world. And in these days, globalization is one of the key words out there, and the better, best way to know each other is to actually meet person one-on-one and get to know them, and peace and understanding is what the aim of our organization is. And so we have photos, a lot of people contributed photos to this presentation, and officers would like to thank you and for your time. And thank you very much, Mayor, and all of you for listening to this talk. And we're not asking for any money or anything. We just want to know we're out there, and we're bringing people to Starkville, and we're doing our part.
Any, all of them have any questions?
Can we tell us the date again of this?
Yes, it is March 28th, which is a Saturday, and it's going to start at 11 and end at 3 approximately. If anybody wants to carry a flag, you're welcome to. Just show up and you can help carry a flag. We've got plenty.
And Mr. Mayor, you're going to grace the event with your presence?
Oh, yes.
And like always?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. We have no public hearing scheduled for this evening. That brings us down to the report from the Election Commission and the status of the upcoming election.
Your Starkville Election Commission is composed of Kirk Rosenhans, who's, who is the chairman, he's not here. Clyde Williams is here with me. I'm Jim McKell, Virgil Boland, and Lilian Thomas. That's your Election Commission. And we, we have met a couple of times, and we have been investigating the use of the electronic voting machines. I personally have, have worked the elections, county, county elections with the machines and am very familiar with them. There, there will be a primary election. Primarily, that will be held by the Democratic and Republican Parties. They haven't come forth with any support yet. That'll be on the 5th of May, and then the runoff will be on the 19th of May. And then the general election for the board and mayor will be on the 2nd of June. There, there is quite a bit of complication to using the voting machines. I understand that you have decided that that's the way we will go. And so we've spoken to the circuit clerk, and she has described the method to us. Marquita has been investigating, you know, we can use their machine, we can use the county machines. They, they won't charge us anything for that. But there are good many requirements involved in, in the machine, in using machines. You can't just, you have to have a special cards made for the readers, and... And there will be a lot of technical service necessary by the company. There will also be, Marquita, there's a package that the company puts out for municipal elections that will include a tech person who will be present during the prep and the election itself, presidential election. And there will be training for the election supervisors, of course, there will be training for the poll workers, and so forth. If, so this, here's the way the voting machines work. If you look on the backside of that same sheet, those are our seven wards. And we know that we have six voting places with two wards meeting at the, or voting at the sports place. Minimum staff for each ward polling place shows there, and that's pretty much typical. We figure that it'll take 40 hired people to work the polls. And we're considering using 20, I'm sorry, 25 voting machines. Those voting machines will have to be taken from the, their current location in the courthouse, and brought down here, and then the tech person and the voting, the election supervisors will have to do a logistics question and answer, and set up the machines along with the tech person. And those will have to be secured until the day of, or the night before the election. At that time, we will have to have transporters to move those machines to the polling places. Those machines have to be secure at the polling places, right? They're really not, you're not able to use them, but obviously they're expensive machines, and where, they would have to be secured. So there is a lot of detail to be taken care of. And the Election Commission sat down and talked about how this, how we could simplify this process. And Clyde, would you like to tell them what we came up with?
Yeah, basically, we're looking at one location for everybody in town. A location's large enough to accommodate the number of people that are coming to vote, with all the logistics required, that parking, and so on. As well as security, have to be air-conditioned, because machines have to have, be, to operate within a certain range of potential. There's a formula that the state has used, which is essentially, for every 200 voters, you have one machine. So it doesn't matter if you have them all in one place, if you have them scattered out all over town. If, for example, Ward Four had 270-something voters, I think, last time, they'll get a machine and a half, no, actually, they'll get two machines. Ward Seven had, I think, 382 votes, votes last time, so they'll have two machines. Ward Three, I think, had something like 1,300, so they'll have six machines. So the idea of standing and waiting in line, it's not going to make any difference, because you can have the same number of machines, the same range of people wherever they are. So that's one of the advantages of having it in one place. The other advantage of having it in one place, another significant advantage of having it in one place, is that you'll have one tech person. If you have a machine breakdown, the tech person's right there. If you have six or seven different locations, and if you have breakdowns more than one place, I guess people just have to wait in line, first come, first served, to get the tech person back, so. The security is much simpler to have them all in one place. The transportation of the machines to the polling place is much simpler to do. And I would hope if we don't do it in one place this year, that we'll
Consider that.
Think about that, and the next board, as soon as it gets elected, and gets seated, I think that we probably would recommend.
And you're, if you're thinking, well, let's see where, what's a big enough place that we can have this? The old Van Lanningham Building at the corner at the railroad tracks on Jackson is huge. And I've spoken to the building administrator at the Baptist Church, and that probably could be arranged. There are more than 40 parking spaces there. There's the street to park on. And it's a large enough area that, you know, if you had to wait, you wouldn't have to even wait outside, there'd be plenty of interior room. As you know, now, most of our polling places, if there's a line, you end up standing outside waiting to get in the building. So, that's a thought. And if you think about parking places, if you, the one decent parking place, parking that we have for a polling place is a sports place. That's the only place. There's very little parking at other polling places. So this would, this would actually be more parking. What we envision is four, five, or six tables where you can register. If your name is A through D, you go to this table. If your name is, you know, you break it up by the alphabet. It wouldn't have to be broken by wards at all, because as you came in and gave your name, and you signed on the poll book, and then you register, you'd be handed the voter card, which would be programmed for your ward. And when you put it in the machine, it would show the mayor, mayoral race, and your own race. So there would be no confusion. It's a very central location. I mean, we could probably come up with another location. But that is a very central location, it's as near the center of town as possible.
Yeah, there's one other thing we could talk about. If we had a central location, and that would be, that we would have at least one, maybe two machines, so that if someone came in and was unfamiliar with the machine, or felt uneasy about using the machine, we'd have an extra machine there. Obviously not programmed for the election, but programmed in a way that the person could become accustomed to the machine, feel comfortable with it, and then go on to the machine and vote, to the regular voting machine.
The other issue, Ms. Isaacs' issue about not knowing where to vote. If you, if you're familiar with the locations of county polling places and city polling places, they're different, or different places. And so, there's always confusion about where you vote. If you're at North Starkville Fire Department, which is North Starkville 3, in the county, you might vote there, but you might also vote at Bortown. You know, there's that difference, change. In Bortown, we don't use, we use instead the church. So, you know, there's always confusion about where you vote. And if we did enough advertising, and we have several months, if we did enough advertising and had only one central location, how could you, how could you get along with this? Something to consider. But we have planned for the normal election, and it will be, by the way, the expense will be a lot, lot greater than normal because of the situation. We could save some money by having, some money by having a central location.
Incidentally, every member of the Election Commission, plus Ms. Bassett in the city, and Ms. Outlaw in the city, will have gone through an extensive day-long workshop process, not only dealing with the laws applying to this particular election, but also we've spent some time playing around with the voting machines, and talking a lot about security, and a lot about the legal aspects of this particular election. So I think that certainly within the next three weeks, y'all are going down on the 25th?
Yes.
Certainly by the end of this month, everybody who's officially responsible will be well-educated. At which point then we will start with the training process for the poll workers and the managers.
Any board members have questions?
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
... during the fiscal year 2009. I had this put on here, one of my passions, all the public schools, and in a recent function that I attended a few months ago, and also a crowd of folks around, one of the assistant managers of PACCAR. These were local people that had moved to the Starkville area because of the public citizens who were associated with PACCAR. We are having a large influx of people to our community, from our public schools and other issues that we have, and it would be a shame for these $600,000 to be eliminated. We've got a lot of good things going on in our community that presently votes, and we need to send a message to our legislative body in Jackson on support for this. So I'd like to read this resolution that I would hope the board would adopt and send to our legislative folks. Whereas the city of Starkville has achieved significant retail and housing growth, and by the way, the housing growth for one year has been a 40% increase in single-family houses in one year. Single housing growth during the worst economic climate in the United States of America since the Great Depression. And whereas the mayor and board of aldermen recognize that an outstanding quality of life within the city of Starkville will continue to be the primary force driving the continuation of said growth, and whereas the mayor and board of aldermen acknowledge the strength of the Starkville Separate School District as one of the fundamental elements of said quality of life, and whereas the voters of the said Starkville School District recently overwhelmingly passed a $26 million, $500,000 bond issue, providing much-needed capital improvements within the said Starkville School District. And whereas recent budgetary cuts in education funding from the state of Mississippi will reduce the school budget state appropriations of $600,000 during the fiscal year of 2009. And whereas said reduction in state appropriations would lead to dismissed, de minimis classroom and extracurricular activities within the said school district, negatively impacting education within the city of Starkville. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the board of aldermen, the city of Starkville, Mississippi, that we do hereby endorse and encourage passage of House Bill 1383 restoring full state funding to the Starkville Separate School District was the fiscal year 2009. And be it further resolved that we send these copies to the lieutenant governor and all the appropriate legislative bodies. Right here, a motion on the resolution.
I move approval of the mayor's resolution.
Second. We will vote. Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lincoln?
Aye.
P.C. McLaren?
Yea.
Matt Cox?
Yea.
Roy Perkins?
Yea.
Jeanette Self?
Yea.
Our next item is under board business, and it's on the issuance of the water bill to Mrs. Peggy Hill. Ms. Brule?
Mr. Mayor, board, y'all charged me last, at the last board meeting to research and come back to you with recommendations on the issue of Mrs. Peggy Hill's water bill. Included in your packet are general opinions, discussions from Mr. Devlin, Mr. Hattaway, I discussed with Mr. Grantham, and Mr. Box, I talked with Ms. Hill, and talked with Mr. Faber, and essentially, I see relief from Ms. Hill only in the amount of the penalty that was associated with that month's water bill. There is nothing that indicates that the water did not flow through her meter, there was no leak that was determined to be there, our policy is very clear. The board obviously can do as it pleases, but in terms of following the policy that is in place, the relief that the AG's opinion offers, well, the ones that I have read and enclosed in your packet, is the opportunity to make a change in the, shall we say, the interest or the fine that was assessed with late things. And that is my recommendation to you, is also included there in the letter that took the point. I spoke with Ms. Hill at some length, and attempted to get in touch with her plumber, but was unsuccessful in doing so. And so, after that research, I have concluded that we can, from my perspective, and my recommendation to the board, is to relieve her of the penalty associated with her water bill for the month of, I believe it's September, that was the, that was the month in question. Excuse me, a question?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the board will leave Ms. Peggy Hill of the penalty that Ms. Brule designated with the large award.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is consideration of appointments to the library, board, trustees, and planning and zoning commission. I believe we have two applicants, I didn't sit in there when they had to take rate. I think Mrs. Lydia Quarles has made application for the library board.
She asked me to give her regrets, she's teaching an attorney law course at the University of Nottingham, she's unable to be here.
Okay. She has requested to be a member of the library board, and we have a Mr. Walker, who is a landscape architect fellow, that is asked to be a part of planning and zoning for Ward I don't know if he's here tonight.
I'm here.
Would you like to come up and introduce yourself? Then I have a question.
Sure. Jason Walker, teaching Mississippi State University in Department of Landscape Architecture. The reason I sent him a letter of interest was to say that from my work experience and my educational experience, I feel like this would be an opportunity for me to give something back to the city of Starkville in the capacity that I actually have something to contribute. So I'll entertain any questions that the board may have.
If I understand correctly, this is for the term that expires June 30th of 2009? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Sounds like you know that probably more than we do, and comfortable with that arrangement that we have to consider that again if that comes.
Yes.
And I'm assuming you've spoken with Alderman Cory at some point? I move approval of, just get my dates right, of Jason Walker to the vacant position of Ward Four that expires June 30th, 2009.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We have a motion to approve Mrs. Quarles to the library board. So, you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And Ms. Brule, you might tell them that we look forward to reigniting her interest in the library that she had when she was a young child.
I would like to do that.
Our next item is a report from the Technology Committee, I believe, something that you attend at?
Our chairman's not here, I don't know if Matt is going to... I'd be happy to. Alderman Cory and I were able to meet with several members from the city, and the brief update from the committee is that 311, which is an initiative... for the city to have one number for all city personnel. In the city, you dial three-one-one, uh, you would reach, um, reach the city and then have your call directed to the appropriate, uh, the appropriate party. Right now, if you look in the phone book, we have ten, fifteen telephone numbers that you have to know and remember. And this is moving forward. We've already purchased the rights to three-one-one some time ago, just working with county because the phone system is not exactly smart enough to know whether you live in the city or the county to, uh, to manage through some of those details. Any more of that will come as we work through those issues with the county.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is another resolution. This is a resolution in support of the Octavia Hall County Expansion Project. I will read it. Whereas the mayor and the board of Aldman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, boards of the city, acting as the governing body for and on behalf of the city hereby finds that the Octavia Hall County Hospital has been a positive resource for the city of Starkville. And whereas the city of Starkville has increased its population and has developed into, developed to the extent that exceeds the current availability of the hospital to meet the needs of the area. And whereas the city of Starkville recognizes the significance of having excellent facilities for the purpose of economic development in the region. And whereas the city of Starkville wishes to show its support for the increased services that the new additions and improvements that are proposed will bring. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the board of Aldman, city of Starkville, that the Octavia Hall County Hospital Bond Project for the expansion of the multiple services good for the community will bring positive results and increase the positive profile and economic development opportunities for the city of Starkville. Do I have a motion?
Move approval of the mayor's resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, second. We will now vote individual again. Mr. McLaren?
Yea.
Mr. Corey absent. Mr. Lincoln?
Nay.
Matt Cox?
Yea.
Perkins?
Nay.
Miss Self?
Yea.
Mr. Sumner Davis?
Yea.
Okay, I have to break. We have a time, we have three nays and three yays.
I voted yes. Four and two.
Pardon me?
I think it was four.
Four and two.
Miss Self, how did you vote?
Yea.
Yea, okay, I took yours as a nay, all right, good.
No.
Okay, I didn't think so, all right. We got, yes, we have four yays and two nays. It passes. Uh, airports consent. There's no items on the building coast planning department office of the city clerk requesting approval of the city's Starkville plane docket as of January twenty-ninth.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move approval of the city's planes docket as of January twenty-ninth, two double oh nine.
Thank you. Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the legislature department is, uh, consenting. Engineering, uh, you know, we left off the infrastructure before we go back. Back under the board business, I think we had, uh, uh, infrastructure committee reports.
Oh, we do, right. We've got a stack of stuff.
You want to go run and get it?
Off of your desk. Uh, why don't you move on to page six, jay.
All right, we'll do that.
Number two.
We'll move to public services in which we request to find it a fact and approval to reject certain non-conforming source of bid supply bids.
Ebi Mayor and Board, um, we, uh, tonight you approved the source of supply bids that were submitted to you. But I'm seeking approval to reject, uh, certain bids for non-conformance with the bid specifications. The, uh, the first item is the fire hydrants. I think y'all recall last year about this time, we did the same, went through the same, uh, procedure. But our city standard is Mueller fire hydrants. Every fire hydrant in the city is a Mueller brand and the parts are interchangeable. And, and we can maintain a minimum, uh, inventory of spare parts. And then our personnel are familiar with, with servicing these hydrants. So, uh, with that, I'm requesting approval to reject the, uh, the central pipe and the summit, uh, pipe bids for...
And questions?
Then the other item is, um, the polyethylene service tubing we use to hook house services up. We standardized to a blue color. Lot of stuff in the ground these days. You know, it's always good when you run across something to kind of know what you're dealing with. And, and the two, uh, summit and central quoted, uh, black, black. So I'm requesting, uh, approval from the board to reject those bids as well.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move that the, uh, city reject as non-conforming source of supply bids, uh, the bids on fire hydrants and the bids on polyethylene service tubing, uh, finding as fact that these, uh, the bids submitted in response to the advertisement did not conform with the bid specification.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Doug. Let's go back to, uh, report from the, uh, infrastructure committee that was had this afternoon.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Board, the infrastructure committee met this afternoon. Uh, Aldman, uh, Perkins, Cox and I, uh, as members of the committee, meeting with Chief Administrative Officer, Ms. Lynn Scrugg, uh, the city engineer Edward Kemp, to review, an internal committee's review, that internal committee, uh, the Chief Administrative Officer, Scrugg, city engineer, uh, Edward Kemp and former city engineer Bill Webb, uh, to review their analysis and review, uh, proposals received in two categories. One, the construction of Pat Station Road. Second, the, uh, surveying of upcoming city projects. Uh, we talked fairly extensively about, uh, the criteria that we use to rate and rank applications. Uh, we talked extensively about the desirability of, uh, whenever possible, assigning work to individuals that live and work in this community. We, uh, didn't talk about the desirability, but it was certainly understood as a next step that when assigning, uh, work to a city, uh, housed by, I'm talking general city businesses and so forth, we should also attempt to spread work around among existing city businesses where they were qualified for the work. Uh, all of this led to, uh, a committee recommendation which differs from that found on the, uh, in the agenda. The original committee for the Pat Station Road Construction Project, uh, was recommending the firm of Neil Schaefer Engineers for the engineering firm to be assigned to that project. And was recommending the firm of, of Pritchard Engineering, uh, as the surveying firm to be assigned to the city surveying project. After the discussion that I indicated, uh, the committee, the infrastructure committee. And by the way, I would parenthetically add that it is generally the business of the infrastructure committee to review proposals of this sort, but did not in this particular case, uh, in the initial review. Uh, the infrastructure committee, uh, adopted a motion to recommend award of the Pat Station Road Construction Project to Pritchard Engineering. And award of the city's projects that require surveying to, uh, hug King Engineering. The committee, uh, finding that, uh, the firms just recommended meet the advertised qualification and our local firm. Uh, the committee members are here. We would be happy for any questions relative to this night.
Any questions for a man of the board members? Then do we have a motion in regard to this recommendation?
Mr. Mayor and Board, I move approval of Pritchard Engineering to perform engineering and design related services for the Pat Station Road Extended Project and authorize to enter into a contractual agreement to provide said services.
Do we have, we have a motion, second. All those in favor of Pritchard Engineering providing the services for the Pat Station Road, please say aye.
Yeah.
All those opposed, nay. Do we have a motion for the survey?
Move approval of King Engineering to perform surveying services for the city of Starkville calendar year two thousand nine and authorize enter into a contractual agreement to provide said services.
Thank you. Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. We have one other thing that we, uh, did not see. There's a request for authorization to advertise for the vacant job of receptionist type of clerk. Mr. Perkins, I think you did not want to get...
No, I didn't. He was around before.
Who was it? Lincoln? Number four, first nail.
Marquita? Is this going to be a full-time position or is it part-time?
Yeah, this is the receptionist type of clerk. As well, it's, uh, my understanding is that it would be as it is, uh, this house was part-time up front, part-time being insurance.
Same, same as it has been for the last several months here.
So the main job would be to answer the telephone?
Well, it, uh, you know, we had, we had changed, we kind of went from just out there full-time to, uh, answering the, to the receptionist in the afternoon from one to five. And she was doing the insurance from eight to five.
Who's doing the insurance now?
Well, we're, you know, same way we did pay-overs, we were just pitching the eight to five.
My whole point is, I'm trying to find out if we're going to have someone to answer the phones. Because like I called you today at your office after lunch and I've yet to get a call back. I'm wondering if this good person here is going to be able to find who recalled and get them the calls back other than just sending them to voicemail just like we did.
Well, now that person would be there from one to, one to five.
On this post?
On that, yes.
Okay.
And we're, we're covering with other city enforcement out for...
You have something, Mr. Perkins, you need to be recognized.
Yes, sir. Um, let me make sure I understand, this is saying that this person we approve will be there for one to five?
Will be at the receptionist, uh, position from one to five.
What about eight to twelve?
Well, currently, Ms. Polk, this, uh, man in that position from eight to twelve.
She's currently, she's the manager today this year?
Yes.
Well, she didn't answer the phone. I called there, I've been calling all week, nobody answered the phone. I have to dial, when I call, when I call the three-two-three-four-eight-one-three, nobody answered the phone all week. The only way I can get into the city clerk's office, the only extension I know is the one-on-nine. And when I dial one-on-nine, somebody answers the phone. And then when they answer the phone, then I go to voicemail. Now, of course, you know, the gentleman from two raised a very valid question. If we look at this objectively, you know, whoever is hired, it means no personal issue with you, Madam City Clerk. But whoever is hired needs to answer the telephone. I mean, they need to answer the telephone. And the reason I say that because the telephones are the property of the taxpayer. And the taxpayers have made some complaints to me that they want their telephones answered. So, you know, if they not answer the telephone, we need, we need to abolish the position of not filling. Now, I mean, that's the way I see it. And the gentleman has some very valid concerns. As I said, I've been calling that number all week, day is Tuesday, maybe last week, and nobody answered the telephone. And then when I call to get in the city clerk's office to speak to somebody, then I get to another voicemail. So if, and Ms. Polk has not been answering the telephone, not the time I called, I don't know when she answered it. Maybe she didn't have enough work to do, she should have answered. Something needs to, we need to freeze the hiring in this city and, and, and get the work out of the people who are already hired to, to do the job. Now, that's the way I see it. If they don't want to work, they don't need a job. If they don't want to work, we don't need to hire them. Now, just that simple. Now, Ms. Joanna did a good job. She is very polite, not going to all those characteristics. But the bottom line, I'll vote for this, and it's not, you're, it's not about you, Ms. Outlaw. It's just about that position. Now, if, 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 if we're going to vote to fill this tonight, I'll vote for it because we're going to bring somebody in here that's going to get the job done. Now, Ms. Polk's supposed to be doing it, then she needs to get out there at that desk and answer the phone, which she has not been doing all the time. Just like the gentleman from two said, he called up there, I called up there, you know. We, as the governing body, do not have time to chase down employees. And that's not our job. The taxpayers don't have that. I'm not getting on you, Ms. Outlaw, this is just general, I just shoot straight about general city business. That's why I'm here, to take care, I'm sure all of us are here for that reason, but, you know, but, you know, it's getting frustrating with the taxpayers' property. Now, this, do these phones belong to the taxpayers? You know, and, and when they raise their concerns, then we have to make our, uh, concerns known as well. So I'll support this motion only if I can get assurance that once we advertise, that person will be answering the phone from eight to five. Now, Ms., now, Ms., if Ms. Polk is going to answer it part-time, then she should be out there. Now, we don't need to be misled on, well, Ms. Polk going to answer the phone this time, if she doesn't show up, she's sick, and there's nobody out there to answer the telephone.
Mr. Perkins, I'd like to take heat off Ms. Outlaw here.
There's no heat on her, I'm just...
Well, okay. Let me, let me focus. One of the things that we take going on, as you know, is we have lost an account payable for her. So, uh, in the interest of trying to get the city's bills paid, uh, I'm, I'm the direct supervisor of the receptionist. And I allowed this Marquita outlaw to use the receptionist, Ms. Polk, during some of those times when that account payable position needed to handle some of those pressing matters. So that's part of that reason that did not happen this week. And I think Ms. Polk may have been, she was out there, but I don't know, you might have called at the time when there was, phone rang and another, you know, and she was on the phone with someone else. But that is part of that. So, um, please understand that that was one of those decisions that, that I made. And I understand your concern and we will, wherever possible, make sure the phone is answered.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, do we have a motion on that, uh, proposal to authorize advertising to fill the vacant job?
One more question.
Sure, go ahead.
Marquita, you said that, um, she was going to work in the after, the person was going to work in the afternoon, but it's a full-time job. And you're asking for receptionist clerk only, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, you're right.
And in the mornings, they're going to be doing what duties?
Doing insurance.
Insurance.
It, it would be the same position that, uh, Ms. Howard had. Uh, she was, in the mornings, she worked in my office doing insurance, preparing insurance claims. And from one to five... claims, and from one to five. The afternoon, she went to the receptionist area.
So with the advertising, it'll have something about insurance claims and receptionist clerk?
Yes, for, you did.
Just didn't say that here. So I'm perfectly okay, in fact, I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion is second. We authorize, uh, advertise for a full, uh, for the vacant job of reception clerk.
Slash insurance clerk.
Right. Slash insurance clerk. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Sanitation?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Alden. I'm here to respectfully request to advertise bids for a twenty-yard front loader truck, a garbage truck.
Do you want to advertise for bids?
Yes, advertise for bids.
This one is, is capital on purchase for purchases this year?
Purchases already budgeted.
I move approval of advertising for bids.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you.
I don't think there's anything for vacant seats in this.
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Mayor, anything else that you sent in?
No, I want to read your name.
We got a good consent. We move approval of the consent agenda with the items, uh, you brought in early in that meeting without being activated.
Second. Got a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, move to extend recess until the seventeenth of February, two double oh nine, at five thirty.
So moved.